I have a sudden all to all call to order the City of Torrington zoning commission meeting for June 28, 2023. The plan is by Zoom or in person at City Hall on Torren room 218, 140 Main Street, Torren, Connecticut. Instructions for Zoom are available online at www.torringtonct.org/zoom. There's a link there to join the meeting. You can call in 1-646-5588, 656, meeting ID is 795-50-735, pass code 907148. Moving on to agenda number two, attendants serving out a commission to see a person, Diane Carroll, Jim Bobinski, myself, Greg Mealy, our city planner, Jeremy Lifer, servant Romali, Tom Helman, Greg Parisino. Moving on to agenda number three, minutes for approval, A for June 14, 2023, motion.
I abstained.
One extension from Commissioner Carroll, I'd speak, and from Commissioner Bobinski.
I'll move to minutes.
Thank you, Greg. Time out of second.
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Moving on to agenda number four, public hearings beginning at 7:00 PM, June 28, 2023, City Hall, Torren, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torren, Connecticut. The time is now 7:03. A special exception 23-03, and psych plan 1457. Applicant Randall Stelma, location Newfield Road, assessor map 231, block 001, lot 026. Proposal farm stand, serving out the commission to see if it is Diane Carroll, Jim Bobinski, Tom Helman, Greg Parisino, myself, Greg Mealy, also in attendance, as our city planner, Jeremy Lifer. Commissioner Carroll, do you have a legal notice, please?
I do. City of Torrington, planning and zoning commission, legal notice. Planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing and a following application on Wednesday, June 28, 2023, beginning at 7:00 PM in the City Hall on Torren, room 218, 140 Main Street, Torren, Connecticut. A special exception 23-03, applicant Randall Stelma, location Newfield Road, assessors map 231, block 001, lot 026. Proposal farm stand, section 8.2 and 5.2.4, time of hearing 7:00 PM. Be various revisions, amendments to City of Torrington zoning regulations.
Hold it up next.
I'm sorry?
Pull up one up.
Okay. Okay.
Is the applicant in attendance, please? Please come forward, state the address for the record. And were the mailings done?
Yeah, I have right here.
And was assigned posted on property for the time, trying to remember?
Yeah, I believe it's still there. Your authority?
Yeah, they just watched the courts and stuff.
Yeah. Yeah, my name is Randall Stone, Patterson, 117, Marshall Lake Road, Newfield.
What are you proposing?
So we have a small farm up on the hill off of Newfield, actually, that accesses Marshall Lake, because it's a very hilly area. So what our proposal is, is that we would like to have a place on our lot that we own that's on Newfield to put our mobile farm stand to sell seasonal vegetables. We would also like to, in time, be able to put a high tunnel there for continued growth and neutral agriculture. And we would also like to have a temporary lot that's if we had, you know, say, pumpkin sales during the fall, and we would have an opportunity to have a food truck to offer whatever is seasonal for that. So it's a temporary location. I don't think that we would have the farm stand full time, obviously, we wouldn't be operating it in the dark, obviously. This is really just to, you know, sell the produce that we have right now. We do have sun sales, we're selling to Sasso's, we do have a lot of waste because we just don't have a venue to sell. So. That's pretty much it.
So you can have a farm to table now, you're saying, to the local restaurant?
We sell to Sasso's.
Yeah.
We were selling to Marson's last year, but we haven't started this year yet.
Where's your farm located?
It's on Marshall Lake Road.
Is that?
Well, it's technically, it's part of the lot that we're talking about, it's just off the hill.
Is it the on the left side, they should make the right bend?
If you, yeah, yeah, so there's three mailboxes in there, that's how you get to it, right? Because we live on the lot that's that is adjacent to it.
I got you.
You know, so with that.
That house would be good, looking to plot.
Yeah, that's not our.
Okay, I got you, okay.
No warrants for it here, not yet.
So your property is adjacent to Newfield, kind of down to it?
Yeah, so our house where we live is above this Newfield lot. So our driveway to our house is on Marshall Lake. But to get to this lot, we have to go down and around because it's such a steep and banked, and there's obviously no path or drive to get down.
That's the lot that had our view of.
Yeah, actually, I agree, we took that trailer and took everything off it, repurposed it, and that's what our farm stand is being built on.
And there's nothing else on that footprint personally?
Right now, it's just a bunch of logs that we went out to a friend to store his, to store logs, he's an arborist. So I get firewood, you know, for living also.
So temporary food truck. What would be the magnitude of that on that property? How often?
You know, so our. It wouldn't definitely every day, I mean, I don't even anticipate that the pharmacy would be there outside of maybe, you know, Thursday or Sunday, because we have five kids that are 12 and under, we just don't have the time. You know, we would, it would be temporary. And the only reason why I think we would want that is just to ask the permission to do that is because if we did do, say, Christmas tree sales, or if we did pumpkins as a better example, that we would just like to have a venue to have people to entice people to come and buy it, to offer up, whether it's cider, donuts, or whatever.
In the future greenhouse, that would be a permanent structure or?
It would be a high tunnel, so, I mean, it doesn't have a foundation, it's just a tunnel that's over the ground, because you would actually, you direct point it into the house, yeah, high tunnel hoop house, yeah.
So Jeremy, this, what he's proposing, would be able to do all those if it's approved?
Yeah, so I kind of explained it in the memo a little bit. You know, we allow this, this sort of thing by special exception on lots that are three acres or more. The food truck, we just had to have a discussion about it, because it's a, it's a, it's becoming a practice more and more, but typically on larger farms, it's just, you know, how the commission wants to approach this.
Yeah. Is there any standard dirty? Conditions here, port a potty, bathroom with water, running water?
I mean, there's no power or anything on the lot right now, I mean, if we needed, you know, a portal with this, do you want me to be able to do that, because there's no, there's nothing, it's just a vacant lot.
You're, you're not planning on having a food truck, like, you know, serving pizza and grinders and, I mean, you're looking at more like probably coffee and light sandwiches and things like that?
It's like event, like seasonal for like the event, right? Like, you know, I use the pumpkin thing, I mean, I don't think, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't tend to have it for, you know, having pizza, you know, for people flying down the road to stop and eat every day, because we're not going to be there. You know, I am, like I said, we, it's very difficult as it is to find time, you know, our anticipated schedule would be Thursday, you know, through Sunday for, you know, two to three hours, maybe four hours at the max a day, especially in the weekends being the heavier of the days.
I've recommended my memo, that if the commission does allow it, it's only there while the farm stands actually open and stay. So it has to be accessory use to the farm stand operation?
Does the city take the time that the farm stand will be open or not?
I mean, we have, I kind of, if you look in my memo, I've left hours of operation planned, so we can discuss that. That would be just a maximum, I mean.
If you do what Jer, if you did what Jeremy said, and put the, the hours in operation for the, for the farm stand, that sort of covers it.
I missed that.
If, if the. If the food truck could be open, the hours that the foods, that the farm stand is open, and that's it, you can't, they can't be there on their own.
Correct, yes.
Yes, I mean, if you state that, that's, I think that's where we'll limit them and, and cover what, I think what we want to do.
Yeah, the important thing is, it's not its own standalone business, it would be.
Yes, yes. Yeah.
And with the food trucks, the intent, they have truck A there kind of exclusively, or you're rotating?
No, it would be rotated, because it's, like I said, it's, you know, and we don't even know who these are, we just want to have the opportunity to, like, I don't know it's necessarily seasonal or pumpkin, so it would be, yeah, it would rotate, for sure.
So everything you're growing is on your Marshall Lake?
It's on, it's on, it's on both, it's Marshall Lake and that property on Newfield, because they're two different lots.
So you would truck it?
Yeah, we just put it on our truck and drive down Marshall Lake and around the Newfield end.
It goes up, you know, once you hit the back of the, the back part of the slot, it goes up the hill?
Yeah, I mean, we can walk it, but it's just, it's, it's not that.
Run.
It's hard to.
So what do you actually grow?
We do tomatoes, garlic, cucumbers, all different types of herbs, squashes, things like that.
Greg, do you have anything comments?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? As a Republican, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward, state the address for the record, please?
I can't read.
Yes.
Yes.
My name is James Sykes, 219, Psalm of Little Road, Torrington. One question, is there ever going to be a permanent structure there?
I mean, I don't have a permanent structure right now, it's just a mobile. I mean, I don't know how to answer that, I don't, I mean, right now, it's a mobile structure, it's built on a trailer that I repurposed, that was on that lot for 20, 30 years. I don't have any plans to build a permanent structure there.
I just don't want it to turn into a Walmart.
Oh, yeah, I would agree, I would buy it.
Or, you know, right now, we're only reviewing the, whatever it is, it's only 200 square feet.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, so it would have to, it would have to get modified if it was, if it was more than that.
What about parking?
And so what I, what I could say is our regulations require, because it's only based on the area of the stand, and it requires one parking space, but it has to be a handicap accessible space, so it's got to be large enough for handicap accessible space.
On the property?
Yes.
And will be, will there be parking on the road?
That's not, well, that's not part of the plan, it's provided parking is on, is on the lot, the, what the regulations require is actually on the lot.
So it's only, only room for one parking spot?
It's one handicap and one?
It's two, it's, it looks two are provided, but only one's required.
So you only expect two cars there at a time?
In the addressed, I should say.
You're only expecting two cars there at a time?
Well, so, I mean, we're only talking about what's required in the regulations.
Okay, because it's a bad corner, it's terrible there, they put up a guardrail, a metal guardrail that sort of comes out until the road. If you beat a car coming down, a year coming up, you got to really pay attention, if there's cars parked on the side of the road. Is that going to be nice? Because I'm not for the farm stand, I'm for, I'm just concerned about the structure and the parking, that's all.
Well, just the, the one thing I can address on, on that is the, why the site was reviewed by the engineering department, and we have a, a 400 plus foot line of sight there, I do know that, in that particular spot. Because we're only looking, we're only looking at where, where the driveways, those driveways.
It was only suggested for a one way in and out, that was the best.
Well, it's why I go for two cars.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, just in case, you don't want, you don't want two cars smacking together trying to get in and out.
Yeah, looking at the plan here, there's some existing stuff to be flushed out, I assume that's.
Yeah, it's, it's up a little bit, it's got to come down for the, for the line of sight.
So that's going to improve the site.
An apron is said to be 22 feet, and the driver would be designed, so it wouldn't be one in, one, it would be able to have people up first coming in and out.
Come up so we can get the sound reporting soon, please.
Saying that the apron, the engineer originally, I was going to have a 12-foot apron, but we had moved it to a 22-foot apron to the law for two vehicles to simultaneously pass.
Yeah, the city engineer required that, it was.
Yeah, I know, you know, I'm very familiar with the site. And if you're going to have a food truck there, you're going to have two cars parked there. That's the whole site.
I mean, myself, I can only speak to what the regulations require, so.
And it's based on 10, 10, 10, 10, farm stands, one for, one for 250 square feet of floor.
Is this lot somewhat flat? At this, at where this area is?
Yes, yeah.
When I, when I was a kid, it was very wet, I don't know if it's still wet there or not, but it was very wet, there used to be a, a. It was, they were going to build a house there, they had a foundation put in, and they never finished the house. When we were kids, we used to go grab baby guns and kill muskrats and frogs in the, because the water was so high, and then they filled it in 20 years later.
Yeah, so this did, you know, it's in my, it's in my mouth, but this did go before the weapons commission and, and they, you know, in communication with me, our, our weapons official, it did have to move back a little bit, just to stay away from what remained of that water course there. But there is a historic fill there in that corner.
And we've been there since 2016, I do, there is a water course that goes on the back, that little stream, but the lot's not wet.
Okay.
And the lot is, is large enough to definitely accommodate more parking if it was necessary. But, you know, per the regulation and me not knowing what's going to happen there, I only submitted, submitted what I was required to, actually a little more.
That's what I was asking, it's, you know, what it's going to turn into.
Yeah, I mean, for, and for the, for the plans, for the, it is flat, and there's area here. For the plans, we had to, we had to make sure they showed the, the minimum number of parking spaces, but there is, there is room in there, if an extra car had to pull within there.
Wish you luck, I will.
Yeah, yeah, we, we have some, we would have some requirements for, for sort of the whole level of ground area. So if, if someone were to be there in a wheelchair or something, they could get to the farm stand, you know, look and, you know, so.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward, state the address for the record?
Tom Condeford, 1821 Winston Road. I'm in favor of this application, the, as you know, this city, I just want to make it, make it public that the city has a, has a, a declared policy to encourage agricultural operations and the sale of global farm products within the city. And then the plan of conservation does mention the, the small farms as being a critical, a critical. Item for the, for the city. But I do have, like this previous gentleman, I do have some concerns that I would like the commission to discuss with the applicant. Now, the first one, first one involves the, the, the issue, the issue of the farm stand, the, the. As the. Now, I listened to the discussion at the weapons commission, and, and then I, I got the, I understood that, that the two parcels, you know, yes, there's two parcels. So when you read, when you read the. What is a farm stand, it, it has this little. Twist in it at the end, it says that 70, 75% of the products sold at the farm stand must be produced on that particular lot. So back to the weapons, here were the two, two properties, so, as I understood, the applicant said that he's, he has products on both lots. So what I'm getting at is that, discuss with him that, that for this, for this farm stand, you're putting the farm stand on one lot, but actually, it, it involves a farm operation on two lots, which I think you can.
It was under the same ownership, so.
Yes, yes, so that's what I'm getting at.
It's impressive on that, that we can treat it as one lot for the purposes of zoning?
Yeah, yes, yes.
Being the same owner.
Yes, yes, even, even if it probably, even if it was a non-contiguous.
I, I, I think, I think they have to be.
But not, it is, in this, this case, it is.
Yeah.
So, okay, so you can do that, the, now, I noticed on the application, the, there was, the issue was produce, eggs and honey products to be sold at this farm stand. So that raised the question of. Right now, I've, I've heard mostly the produce part of it, now, I think you need to discuss with the applicant about his anticipation of, of having poultry for the eggs, and then how, you know, how big of an operator that might be. So that's the second item, and then the. And then I think he, the third item in my head was about the seasonality of this operation, I think he's already explained that, that it's, that it's not going to be a year-round thing, although, I don't know, if he does have poultry, they could do sex, you know, year-round, but the. I'll let you discuss it with him, but basically, I would have to say I'm quite in favor, I agree with the, with the, with the, with the, with the policy that the city has on the bookstand, I just hope that we can go forward with it.
Thank you very much, sir. Do you want to just comment on the eggs and the honey component, is that something that's brought in from a fowl farmer?
The honey, the honey we do, we, we lost our eyes this past year, which actually are on that other lot. We have to replace them, we still have a lot of money to spend having that just. Eggs, we sell eggs, we can, I think, I forget what the regulation is, I think it's like up to 70, I forget what it is, but whatever the regulation is, we still stayed well under it, and I wouldn't anticipate leaving anything, it's to the point where I spoke with the ring also, we're not going to leave any produce or anything down here, we would close everything up at the end of the night, bring it back, because we do, obviously, a wildlife, we call it an issue, I guess, but just a presence of wildlife that's, that's there all the time, you know, we deal with it all the time, you know, in the farm area, so.
What are your anticipated hours, you think, you know, obviously, saying there's no one visiting and so forth there.
Yeah, so if, I mean, the most important days for us would certainly be, I think, Friday, like on people's way home essentially, so maybe from like, you know, 4 to 6, something like that, and then Saturday from probably like, you know, 9 to 12, 9 to 1, and, you know, something, we're not going to be there all day, we just don't have the time in our schedule, five kids that are 12 and under.
I mean, we, we, I don't think we want to hamstring these three hours, but we're just looking for an early day, an early day.
Yeah, I mean, we definitely wouldn't be, earliest we'd probably be, there would probably be, you know, 9 o'clock or so, by the time, you know, we can actually get down there, and we would never be there at, you know, almost dark, like.
Would anybody else like to speak in favor of this application, please come forward? Anyone remotely would like to speak in favor of this application? Being that, would anyone like to speak in opposition on this application, please come forward, state the address for the record?
Good evening, I'm Dorothy Balski, I live at 1853 Newfield Road, I'm the property that butts Mr. and Mrs. Stelma's southern border. I've lived at this residence for 18 years, please bear with me, I'm from the school, if it's not documented, there are any issues on socials, which I have known. I'd also like to preface that I am favor improving in agriculture, and I'm also in favor of saving the environment and the earth. And I'm going to start off by saying, I'm in opposition to the P and Z, the P and Z and the wetlands applications. I for inconsistencies, omissions, and not forthcoming about the totality of the site, when there were site plans already ready in City Hall and comments, but we know where we're going, right now, I'm putting the cart before the horse. And I'd like to go through because I see nothing that says anything about commercial food trucks, says greenhouse on the site plan, which is a high tunnel special exception, and I have to know if Torrington has regulations for high tunnel regulations. Also talks about removable structures, where and how will all these structures be moved around this lot? I'd like to also ask how the topography of this site has changed. This lot was protested, indeed, wetlands, floodlands, no underground electricity, water, sewer, what have you. Talked about the trailer, that trailer was never supposed to be parked, they zoning prohibited, and asked the people prior to, to get it off the land. They wanted to stay there while their property, they owned, other people owned that property, and it was just put in as a right way to have a driveway put in to swing around, to go to the, build something over by Sunnybrook Park. On wetlands application, Mr. Stelma just has obviously farmland, zero wetlands checked in a five acre buffer. Yes, the five acre is continuous with the land, but it's all, excuse me, it's all rocks and ledge, and there is wet, it is wet. I live next door in the back part of my hill, and yes, he said his mom lives a few houses down, and I know there's water issues on her side of her property as well. And I think throughout the years, everyone has seen the runoff on Newfield Road that's constantly being addressed. On the wetlands application, section seven, talks about a sign being posted, I never saw a sign posted. Property owner that abuts this plan was supposed to have a certified letter, I never received anything. The third portion of this wetland, section seven, says failure to post and maintain a sign as required by the section shall be grounds for denial. I don't think it's applicable in this case. Again, people, I'm trying to give you a synopsis as to where I'm coming and why I'm opposed. On Monday, June 19th, was the first time I met Mr. Stelman at his lot site, I was going down to get the mail. He stated that there was just going to be a vegetable stand for his children to earn money, daughter was in 4H, fine. He said he might have a cooler on Marshall Lake Road for selling eggs, okay. I asked again, would there be produce left, because of the bear population especially, and all the other wildlife? He said no produce left. I said, would the stand be manned or be an honor system? Little vague on the thing, and said, well, they may put a camera. Okay, so, and then at this time, Nate, Mr. Marty Cyrus comes in and was looking at the land and whatever. And as the gentleman earlier talked about, Torrington zoning regulation farm stand, I'm assuming it's part of one of the regulations that's being tweaked in some way to accommodate this farm stand, I'm not sure, but I, as he always stated, 75% of the produce on the site. On Tuesday, the 20th, I go to P and Z to look at the file, make copies, lo and behold, I see this big site plan. So as I'm saying, for putting the cart behind the horse, there's bigger things going to happen here. I think, to me, you're not forthcoming, I don't like it. You tell me what you're going to do, we're not going to do, or whatever, everybody needs to be, I don't know how something can be deemed a wetland, you can't even put a trailer on it, and all of a sudden, now we've got all these big site points. Excuse me if I raise my voice, I apologize, I got a ton. So on the site plan, as you all well know, it says farm stand, food truck, parking, greenhouse, entrance. And then again, on the, on the P and Z application, it just says farm stand again, to sell produce, eggs, and honey. Finally, on Wednesday, June 21st, I received Mr. Stelman's letter, not certified, I've never received a certified. I've never received a certified mail. Doesn't give me a whole lot of time to do research. Finally, on Wednesday, I get the letter. He introduces himself, his wife, and five children. Roots and Coops Family Farm sells eggs and seasonal produce. Gives me the time and place of the zoning meeting. All of a sudden, down in the next little town like it's, oh, by the way, we're now gonna mention high tower special exception. Nowhere anyplace do I see on any application high tunnel listed. So now it seems like we're going from agricultural to commercial, and we have a bunch of things going on there. I I don't know how this one little lot, like you said, it was two hundred square feet, with wetlands is gonna be used for others. Although the high tunnel are the latest and greatest things in agriculture. No problem with that. Um, I have a problem where its place and what happens, and the concerns with high tunnels. It says it's a twenty-by-forty structure, and it's movable. Where on the site would you be moving it, number one? From my understanding, from my research, it requires swales, a retention pad. Gotta tell me the types of flooring. There needs to be an under, under, excuse me, underground outlet to drain, which is required. Erosion control. How will all of these produce and soil be handled from all these beds? How will everything be disposed of? Will it be burned? Will the compost piles? And it's a bear food. We have many families of bears, and that boar is huge. He's close to six hundred pounds. Nobody else may have seen him, but they come from that lot through my property down to his mom's garden as well. And there's families. There's a side with three pups and a side with one. The um, Salmons grow tomatoes and eggplants, which he has said to me, which are prone to diseases. And I understand there's certain things like fungi, mold, mildew, spores that are already admitted to the air. But these things cause asthma and pneumonitis. And in this valley, where this high tunnel is gonna be proposed, requires ventilation, anywhere between three to seven hours a day. And that means, it's in, I don't know what the air control looks. I don't know how. Where's the water source gonna come from? And you're right, where is sanitation gonna come from? How are people gonna wash their hands? Is there gonna be a pouring party on this site? What are the sanitation requirements? Will this tunnel have to be heated? And how will it be heated? Will it be burning anything to heat? And how would flushing of the hard salt buildup in the soil be handled? And how would you mitigate contamination by personnel leaving the high tunnel? If it's contaminated, there needs to be. Now, from what I've read, the Connecticut wetlands and salination process in a wetlands flood plains is a first step needs to be addressed for ecosystem degradation. It says salination displays unique nonlinear behavior indicative of rapid and perhaps irreversible environmental change degrades wetlands and alters ecosystem, including the climate. East Coast is the biggest offender of all this, which goes into Atlantic Ocean. And I think the city of Torrington knows that like on High Lake, I grow where it wells are contaminated because of all the secrets of just salt, doing salt in the hills and everything. So our problem is, says it's not wetlands. I don't know if it's been recently protested again to deem it. I don't know what lands has thing. But I can't understand how from no use to this big operation that's gonna take place. Um, I'm also sure that they have state federal permits for farming. And hopefully they'll reduce themselves from their respective committees going forward on any of these applications. The lines of sight were also one of the addresses. Mr. Stelman witnessed the amount of uh, traffic, the types of traffic, plus the speed on the Newfield Road at this lot, which is has, which has a curve. Newfield Road is a thoroughfare for Marshall Lake Road, Mountain Road, uh, Sawmill, and into Winchester and all the tributaries. I think I asked the planner one time how the traffic control, I forgot. I was saying six hundred. He was saying eighteen hundred, two thousand cars a day or something, trucks. There's everything that goes in this section. In the eighteen years that I've lived there, I've seen many accidents and near misses, including since the reparation of this portion of the road, there's been three accidents, I believe, going north and two accidents going south. One to the left and to the stream on Mr. Stelman's property, Stelma's property, excuse me, and one over the new guardrail into the embankment down into the river. Uh, I have, I take my life in my hands every day getting to the mailbox, trust me. And he was astounded to see the amount of traffic, big trucks, tankers, whatever it is, and the speed around the scene. And they don't take the road or there in the curb. They take it in the middle of the road because they know that the sightline is not fair. And the tree stump is really a laugh because the city of Torrington, when I addressed about the the narrowing of the road, said, oh, once that tree is down, everything, the sightline will be fine. But they left this big stump, and that's where our problem, is another problem. I think that stump needs to be removed completely, if we're gonna go forward, which I hope we're not. Um, also, I see for consideration for decision, it lists conservation commissioner, P and Z planner, building officer, and a health officer. So I'm assuming this is all gonna be taken into, because of sanitary and health reasons. There's gotta be someplace, where are you gonna get the water? How's this water gonna be trucked in? Are we gonna have water tankers come in? Control? I don't know. To me, I'm looking at my health, my welfare, my wealth, and my property value. And then, um, everybody's promoting, like to promote agriculture, and I think that's fine. And now we're sticking in a lot of other things, and we have a big project ahead that I'm truly, I don't think it's being addressed correctly. Again, I'm gonna repeat, putting the cart before the horse. Otherwise, we wouldn't have these big city plans set up now and ready to go. This is just a foot in the door. Um, I would hope that uh, people would want to have their family's health and well-being protected and the environment and the future generation. They have children, so I hope, we think twice about where we're placing things and how we're doing this, not yourself. Because it's an in thing and it will help them out. If you have five acres of land, I can't understand why you cannot have it on your five acres. Why everything's gonna be in a wetlands, two hundred square foot uh, lot. And again, I would like to say for my second thing, I don't know if I was supposed to have received a certified mail. I did not have received anything certified. Any questions?
Anyone remotely have any questions at this point?
No, I'd like to, I'd like to hear Jeremy's memo.
All right, well, we're still with the.
I know, I know we are.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak in opposition on this application? Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Pauline Lannan, and I live at twenty-three thirty-five Newfield Road. I've lived there for forty-seven years, so trends of traffic and so forth has certainly changed with the building up on Marshall Lake, Salmon Hill, all of that traffic has changed over forty-seven years. Um, we live on five acres, and so I can see and appreciate, and we have a hill in back. So I can see the topography that that the applicant is speaking on and land is chapped, remember to go uphill and mow the grass or whatever. My my main concern is traffic. Newfield Road, really, really heavy traffic. And now we have major dump trucks coming from almost the center of Winchester Center because there is some sort of a nursery program out there where they're bringing bloom out. So you can have, last summer, we had about sixteen trucks a day going by. Now, we live in an old house, so we're right on the on the road. Um, at at the spot where that that uh, land is, it 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 obviously, it 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 has a brook that goes through it, which is part of the turn. So you're going into a brook that's part of that turnoff. You're coming straight, going into that turn, and then going straight down uh, where most of the land is owned by the the flood control. Uh, speeds, uh, we've had the speeds changed at different times, over forty miles an hour, and that meant that everything was going sixty miles an hour. Um, we've had it lowered to thirty miles an hour on our section of Newfield Road. But however, right before that farm stand is being proposed, it's forty miles an hour. So you're going forty miles an hour in approved speed limit in over that that brook and then straightening out and going straight. I can tell you that cars opposing each other, one going north and one going south at that same point without turning into a land area, um, are basically skimming. And so if if the town is looking for that, I think it's more than just a site. I think it needs to be managed for traffic and a view of what the cars are doing. And with everybody now, and it seems like the cause of most accidents are intentiveness, looking at your phones, doing everything but driving the car. Um, that whole issue is uh, is 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 out there. I think the plans that the applicant talked about and addressed are rather fluid. And it's a little bit of ifs ands, and and that's worrisome because it allows for taking a step and then taking a mile. Um, I think that if the the store is open or the shop is open all the time, at least you have people who are turning in or exiting out, who knew the store was open. But if you have people stopping to go in and now we're closed because we're only open three hours a day and all of that, you have that much more traffic going into that eat risk and then trying to come out right on the bend. So I would say that before you do anything, do a a good study on traffic patterns, speed patterns, and look at the amount of how many cars could go in. And I think the idea I read in the paper that it was like, could be four cars. Who is there if they're not there to supervise the stand a great deal of the time because their their lines are busy and they have lots of children? Who is willing to be there to say that a third car, a fourth car doesn't decide to pull in? And what are you doing with the bend? And what do you do with people heading south or north, turning? So it really is a very limited eat risk to come out of that that area, even though it might be the definition of code. Thanks.
Thank you. Any questions?
Well, just have a comment about the, whether or not they're open or not. Can we state that there has to be a pretty decent-sized sign or a chain link? Oh, the other question I had to the applicant too. So when you're not open, the trailer is not going to be sitting there, right? Or is it? I mean, are you gonna move it off, move it so it doesn't look like it there's?
I mean, my my attempt was to have, and I don't even know if this is with the regulations, to have a chain everywhere, because I don't want people on the property
Right.
while we're not there. And, you know, you have that stump, um, being cut out, somebody's still gonna drive over that. And so in the apron is quite large, so I think if I had that locked off with a chain, you know, for most of the time, well, when we're not there, I mean, I don't think it would be a real good opportunity for people to pull in. So I don't think we'd have that problem. As far as signage goes, um, we haven't really thought of that. I mean, we can, we're absolutely open to suggestions for that.
Yeah, clearly.
Yeah.
Safety signs, does either close or?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, we just, yeah.
Nothing permanent, right?
Yeah, or something that hangs, even hangs from a chain, you know, but just something to identify.
But then there won't be any visible produce in the trailer, because if you're not there, you're not gonna leave anything there.
I won't leave anything there because I know that likely a lot of them will get in there, you know, even though it's, it'll be, you know, locked off and door, and I don't, you know, I don't wanna destroy it. Paranoidly, it kind of will stop it.
Clearly known that there's no reasonable, if there's no produce there, there's nobody there.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we we have, you know, the the white flower farms, the those plastic toes.
The little lily crates.
Yeah, that were used to to transport stuff to improve.
Um, first thing I wanna say is that the sign was there. I drive by there every single day. I live up in the area. I saw the sign, where are the people? Why is there a special exception there? And I said, I couldn't tell you because I didn't see the application, okay? But the sign was there, sir. Okay, I have to agree. Um, I'm talking, sorry?
Did you say for wetlands, the sign?
No, the public hearing, the sign was posted.
Yes, I have my sign.
Okay, so okay, that's not what you said. Okay, I'm not here to argue with you. I'm making your comment.
Okay.
Okay? Um, is there a reason why you picked the location of the entrance at that point?
I mean, so I might, me personally, the engineer thought that was the the easiest point of access.
Because it does narrow in that area, okay?
Yeah, yeah, my lot, so I can't go any closer. I know what you mean, because like with the guardrail is there.
Exactly, which amazes me that they didn't move that telephone pole, what they repaved the whole road as you're coming from Torrington towards Marshall Lake or that intersection. It just amazed me that that wasn't done correctly in my opinion. But um, you know, where this tree remains, which is going towards Marshall Lake.
You're talking about the stump there?
Yeah, the stump. Well, it says tree to remain.
Well, just the stump, we were gonna cut, we were.
But is there a reason why you couldn't move that entrance farther up? And maybe that's a little bit, I property line right there. Right, exactly, but have that entrance run along that property.
Well, the problem is that there is actually there, so behind that, that stump that's there, that behind that, the town took down. Again, a lot, I think a lot of this was also done before we moved here. Like, I don't remember with the old roadway in Lake. I don't know when that happened. Um, but there's actually a really large, beautiful maple that's maybe fifteen feet, like just to the backside of that, that I don't want to have to remove. There's a really nice maple tree that it's, if I had to give you like a a clock from it, it's probably about seven o'clock from that pine stump about, I'm gonna say roughly fif- fifteen feet from it, that I would have to also remove it, so, you know, it's probably a hundred or maple tree.
Yeah, if you have all the trees located on the plane, that's the issue here, I think. Um, you know, you're telling yourself, but I can't see it on the plane. I can only go by my head on the plane. Um, but if, just looking at it, I would think that the entrance should run along that property line and maybe you can get more parking, so you're not gonna be forced with this little curb or whatever and only have three parking spaces and people getting in and out. Kind of get people off the road farther into the property. That's just my personal opinion. Um, I think that should be looked at again. Um, I'm not against what you wanna do, okay, honestly. Um, I just think the layout could maybe possibly be tweaked a little bit. That's all. That's my personal opinion.
So I, if I could, I'll just address the wetlands question. So the wetlands commission, um, there there was a review that was that was submitted by me for agricultural uses, what, I mean, agriculture uses are exempt from wetlands regulations if they meet certain, you know, if if it's a standard agricultural practice, they're exempt from wetlands. They went before wetlands for for what they call a jurisdictional ruling to to for review to make to just to ensure that they meet the, what they're doing meets the definition of agriculture. Um, beyond that, there this, the legislature is very clear that they that they want, they don't want unnecessary burdens, you know, around wetlands placed on agriculture uses. So the way this, it has no bearing on what they commit, what this commission does here, because we got positive report from the wetland commission. You know, we, just like any other site we ever do, we can take in, um, you know, grades and S and E controls and things like that, when commissions make their determination.
I think what should be done on this particular point is the large specimen trees that you have the people that's talked about should be actually located to, you know, feel for what he's actually saying.
Yeah, regulations require any of the interests are agreed.
Yeah, so, you know, that would help us better to know exactly what they have actually physically on the park.
I would like to correct for the right. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Dorian Bowsky at the eighteen fifty-three Newfield Road interest that abuts this property site. I had said there was no wetlands notice signed posted at that site. Yes, there is a zoning one, which I did not get.
Yes, there is a zoning one, which I did not get a certified mail. I did get in the mail, but I'm talking about wetlands.
So wetlands doesn't have the same rules as zoning does, and for and for that determination, no sign is supposed to, there's no requirement.
Okay, when I went into look at the regulations online, it talked about when for an application on there, that it listed the thing.
Only for what goes to public hearing at wetlands. It it makes it, it's a very rare occurrence at wetlands that anything goes to public hearing. It usually only involves like, say, someone wants to build an industrial building and they're and they're proposing to fill wetlands. That something like that would go to public hearing.
Okay, so then what you're saying.
It has to be significant activity.
High tunnel application, then that would go to wetlands first and they don't have to post a sign or?
No, they don't. They, it's an agricultural use, so there's no requirement even for an application at wetlands. So they they reviewed it to make sure they they met the exemption. But there's no requirement at wetlands even for an application because it's an agricultural purpose. It's an agricultural use. That's not the statutes requirement for wetlands.
Okay.
So there's a lot of exemptions.
I'm just looking under section seven, as I said, I went through, knowing that there's wetlands and what was deemed before. I didn't know what had.
Yeah, this is state, this is on state statute. There's, at state statute, there's uh there's exemptions for many kinds of agricultural activities.
Yes, I I understand.
So so no signs required for wetlands.
Okay. If going forward, if if it goes, he needs to put anything else like the high tunnel on this property, how does that go? That is that an application through P and Z or does that go directly to wetlands?
So the on on the plan we have, there's an area that's designated for for the greenhouse and and it it can't be moved anywhere else. It's gotta be within that specified area.
Is there a difference between greenha- greenhouse and high tunnel?
Well, it's a hoop, it's basically a hoop house.
I understand that.
Yes, so that's just a type of greenhouse.
I mean, according to what I looked up, they had so many different variations in this tunnel compared to a greenhouse.
And we're not gonna, it it's just identifying an area for the, if it's if it's a, if it's a structure that's used as a greenhouse. That's that's all this commission cares about. I mean, if there's something else that comes into building mode or something, then that'll be dealt, they don't have to be dealt with through them. But it's just for 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 this commission's benefit, we're just identifying an area where a greenhouse is gonna go. How that building looks really isn't, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a. It might not be to you, but it's a fairly small, small operation, fairly small structure.
I I understand that. It's a small piece of property. I'm just saying, you know, the health concerns, the pros and cons.
Yeah.
And trends that are.
I I think, I think what, you know, my opinion anyway, I think what you're getting into is is regulations on very large farm operations. This isn't that. This is a small, this is, it's a small piece of land and a small operation that even the Department of Agriculture isn't gonna drag, isn't gonna drag around in this.
No, I understand that, and I understand, you know, for agriculture. I was just curious how, I don't understand how the system works. I mean, it's, it's say certain things, we, uh.
Yeah.
You think a buddy neighbors would would need to know.
Yeah, I just think every, what what you're, what you were writing up about the farming practices, that's that's for large farms. It's it's not for a farm stand and greenhouse.
The farm, right, I understand. Okay, so where you're saying to me that the wetlands have approved for even where the farms at or greenhouse is going already.
So all all they've said was, so their own, their their only job in this is to say, yes, you're doing an agricultural operation. You're doing, you're doing an agricultural use and and they exempt everything. So there's not even, there's not even a requirement for an application in that situation.
Okay.
That's that's really their only job in this, so.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
I was thinking about, James, when you mentioned about that that stump. Um and I don't know if it's on the plan. I actually didn't see the plan until we picked up the revisions today. But where that um apron comes in, if I move that farther down towards Marshall Lake. I believe that that would put us more so in the middle of that bridge. As it is right now, if somebody was pulling out, being on the right side of the road, it would be past where that bridge starts to narrow.
Oh, okay.
So it's actually more of an open area. It would make it claustrophobic if I had pushed it down.
Definitely does narrow it in.
Yeah, so the farther down that is, I think the more congested and claustrophobic that would be.
Okay. No parking signs in that spot? Is that something that would be suggested?
I don't know. I can, you know, I can speak with traffic if if.
I mean, just in that.
So.
Two of them.
So what I can say about the about the traffic questions is um engineering and and police traffic re- reviewed it. And they they required information to be to be submitted on the on the sidelines. Um they reviewed it and they they said that the sidelines met their requirements. Um that doesn't mean they're gonna allow them to park inside the road, which is, it just means cars pulling in and out have the sideline.
Sure.
Um in that particular spot.
I'm just saying, you have to see the justice, you think that would, because you're a wolf size of a llama.
Yeah, I don't, so so I can't answer whether they, whether even if we ask them to, if they would with the size of it, I can always, I can always ask. With the future greenhouse going in there, obviously you're gonna have a water. Supply, water plants and so forth.
Uh I mean, right, right now, we um, we have a a boat that we do use that we put the back of the truck if we need some water. I mean, we don't do it down there, but we do, we also have a a lot that we do down the street that on neighborless is used, and we bring water in on the, in a tank.
But you did say your intent was to bring every, bring everything down from on top to and bring it and bring it out again with that.
I mean, if we're growing something there, obviously the the plant would stay there, but as far as any produce is there, we would not leave anything down there. Um I actually wouldn't really want to leave anything that isn't, like the the high tunnel is, you know, there's poles that are put to the ground. But anything that's not in the ground like that, I don't think that I'd want to leave on that lot. That area, a lot, sometimes funny stuff happens of that way, so.
So we're only really talking about what you might be growing in the greenhouse.
Yeah, yeah, would be in the high tunnel would just be, again, it would just be a way for us to expand, you know, tomatoes, cucumbers, something like that. Um high tunnels are important because it allows you to extend the season, you know.
I guess where I'm going with it is you're gonna have a well there, electric, supply that well. To be able to water your plants and so forth, you know, electric.
I would like to, but I mean, that that's not in my plan, and I obviously can't afford to do that. Um we we would do the same thing we do with the lot across the street, um and we would just bring a tank on the back of the truck with water. And water, I mean, most of the stuff doesn't, doesn't even be watered every day, so. I mean, we sell about three thousand dollars a year. I think a lot would take me five years to pay for it.
And the importance of the food truck, you feel that's a real law?
I mean, it's not as important as the farm stand, um but I think to be able to have um a temporary place where we could bring in. Um somebody to make a, you know, a pumpkin event, you know, more likely a better for us, I, that's.
I mean, it's like a certain that, you know, I'll be straight up with you, we're doing a pumpkin event, where's everybody parking?
Right.
You know, that's where I'm coming from. You know, and again, first and foremost, you know, the agricultural scenario, I think it's great. And I think we need more, I think everybody in this audience would probably agree to that, you know, kind of homegrown and and, you know, farm at the table. As Commissioner Carolyn mentioned, and I think it's it's a wonderful thing. You know, my concern is the the traffic flow and so forth, you know. When you're talking, you know, pumpkin event, I see fifty kids running around with their parents, having a great time. Where's everybody parking? You know, are they gonna be bussed in, dropped off? I mean, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know how many people will come and how many won't. You know, and again, how many pumpkins do we have? You know, we don't have, it's not like we can compete with like Fairweather Acres down on like ninety-one there, weather shit. I don't, you know, you don't have ten thousand pumpkin points. We probably have. I don't know, we may end up with fifty to sixty total pumpkins, you know, it's not, it's not a big thing. And I see with where we grow them, there's not a lot of, I mean, we can't become a huge operation anymore yet.
Um I think, I think it's longer than our our um regulations, something that the number of days that the. That the food truck has to reach on, food truck efforts to, if that's something we want to consider. We can say, and I have a concern on the traffic situation.
I'm in faith, I don't, I'm I'm in agreement with Greg. I I feel like uh the Newfield Road is a pretty major thoroughfare. I mean, it's it's wide and not, this particular spot may not be, but the rest of it is. So, and it, you know, it's it's a, it's a, it's difficult, it's difficult to envision. You know, some kind of special event on such a small piece of property. And you know, I I'm hearing, you know, you know, okay, maybe only fifty pumpkins, but fifty pumpkins might be, you know, ten or twenty cars. I I don't know. I I just, um if we were to, if we were, a farm stand is one thing. You know, where somebody stops by, picks up some tomatoes or other things, there's plenty of farm stands. I've driven by a million of them, but this this a little bit more than just the farm stand.
Excellent, I mean, you know, the farm stand is definitely our primary goal. That's, I mean, we don't have a venue to to sell anything. And you know, that is absolutely our primary, the 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 food truck or the the secondary spot there was just to drive um a little more attention to it. You know, not, certainly not the primary goal, what what the, what we're trying to do.
Jeremy, did you finish your memo?
I'm sorry?
Did you finish reading your memo?
He didn't, I didn't start yet.
Mary, we, I mean, if we read that earlier, that that's the, there would have been some information other people wouldn't have had to wonder about in their presentations. Uh I, let's get through the memo, please.
Yeah, um Randall Stelma has filed an application for property on Newfield Road. Assessors map two three one, block zero zero one, lot zero two six, to install a two hundred square foot farm stand. Eight hundred square foot greenhouse, new driveway curb cut and parking in an area for a food truck. The property is owned by Randall and Aaron Stelma, is five point zero eight acres in area and is located in the R sixty residential zone. There are no previous site plan approvals in the city records for this property. The proposed farm stand use is allowed in the R sixty residential zone by special exception under zoning regulations. Section three point one, table of permitted uses, subsection twelve point two zero, farmer's roadside stand. The greenhouse structure is allowed under subsection twelve point one zero, farm uses. The commission may allow food truck under certain conditions as accessory use to the farm operation. And if it is deemed an appropriate accessory use to the farm stand. A public hearing for the special exception and use site plan approval are required for this proposed project. The review of this application is guided by site plan requirements of section eight point four. And the general special exception review standards in section eight point two. A set of plans has been submitted titled Site Plan Torrington Negative, parcel number two three one, zero zero one, zero two six. By Eric A. Gerrope P. E., dated June twenty seven, twenty twenty three, by Cheats. Staff has met previously with the property owner to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Um other items of note, one is an agricultural use. I recommend the following waivers. A, paving of the required and accessible handicap space. The space shall have a rolled ground surface to enable access to the proposed farm stand and greenhouse. B, site plan requirements, eight point three, eight point four point three point I, landscaping plan. And eight point four point three point J, utilities plan. Two, the commission should, in their discussion on the application, consider the parking of a food truck during business hours for the farm state. Food trucks have been used effectively in some farm stand and agricultural locations to supplement the agricultural business. This is more common at larger farm stands and particularly farm breweries and wineries. The commission should weigh the appropriateness of a food truck at this location. Three, the commission should discuss hours of operation with the applicant as part of the public hearing on this application. Four, in reviewing the special exception standards in section eight point two of the zoning regulations. I recommend that the commission make a finding that proposed use, location and site design is compatible with the neighborhood. And surrounding uses and is protective of the health, safety and welfare of the ci- the citizens of the city of Torrington. For the granting of a special exception approval. Other staff comments, city planner, Nate Harvey Cyrus, assistant city planner, and an email to the city planner dated June twenty second, twenty twenty three. Offer the following comments on the plans. Wetlands, there are regulated wat- uh wet, regulated water courses in the vicinity of the subject property that require what wetlands review for this proposal. On June twentieth, the applicant received a determination from the inland wetlands commission. That the proposed plan is an as of right agricultural activity and does not require a permit. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for this application. Landscaping, if possible, retain moderately sized maple trees adjacent to the city right of way. Along Newfield Road and retain a vegetated buffer along the small tributaries of the Nottingham River. Lighting, no lighting is shown on the site plan. New lighting must comply with section five point one seven of the city zoning code. Including the use of full or cutoff fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Dark Sky Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of the application. A sign permit shall be required before install- installing any signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, this application was now referred to the conservation commission for reviewing content. Architectural review committee, this application was now referred to the A R C for content. Engineering, Paul Constance, city engineer, in a memorandum to the city planner dated June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Submitted a list of conditional comments to be addressed by the applicant. See the comments attached. Police traffic, police traffic sergeant Dustin Waldis, in an email to me dated, uh, things totally wrong in that. It's somewhere in the middle of June, offered the following comments on the plans. I have no comment on this farm stand, food truck, greenhouse for future. If a food truck is in play here, ju- just make sure to follow the vendor guidelines. W P C A administrative assistant Cheryl Lewis and building official, building official Kevin Gillette. Indicated that their respective departments have no comments on this application. No comments were received regarding this application from the city economic development office. Staff at the Torrington area health district, or from fire marshal's office. Conclusion, I recommend approval of the special exception twenty three dash zero three and site plan number fourteen fifty seven. To install a two hundred square foot farm stand, eight hundred square foot greenhouse, new driveway curb cut. And parking in an area for a food truck on that property at Newfield Road. Assessors map two thirty one, block zero zero one, lot zero two six. As presented on the submitted plans, the following conditions and recommendations. One, the applicant shall address all remaining comments from city engineer Paul Constance. With respect to city engineering standards for driveway curb cuts and plan details prior to the issuance of a zoning permit for the project. See the latest email comments from the city engineer dated June twenty eighth, twenty twenty three. Two, the applicant, the applicant shall follow the comments from police traffic sergeant Dustin Waldis. Regarding the ci- city vendor guidelines for food trucks. Three, per zoning regulation, section two point two, farm stand. At least seventy-five percent of the products sold in the farm stand shall be from the farm where the stand is located. Four, the applicant shall follow the comments of Nate Harvey Cyrus, assistant planner. Outlined in his June twenty second, twenty twenty three email to the city planner. The requirement for a landscaping plan shall be waived. However, the applicant shall work with the assistant planner to install appropriate screening and visual buffering. To the property at nineteen twenty nine New Newfield Road to the north of this property. Five, the requirement for paving of the banned accessible handicap space on site shall be waived. The parking spaces in route to the farm stand shall be a flat rolled ground surface that is suitable for accessibility. Six, the operation of the farm stand and associated uses shall occur no later than blank AM, and no later than blank PM. Seven, a zoning permit is required prior to the alteration or use of the site for the proposed use. Eight, food truck placement as indicated on the city plans, on the submitted plans, shall only be allowed during normal operating hours of the farm stand. Food trucks shall not be allowed on the property when the farm stand is not in operation. Only one food truck shall be allowed on the property at a time. Nine, the planning and zoning permission finds the proposed use, location and site design is compatible with the neighborhood. And surrounding uses as protective of the health, safety and welfare of the city, citizens of the city of Torrington. In accordance with the general and specific special exception standards of section eight point two of the zoning regulation. Regulations and state statutes and policies governing agricultural uses. Ten, in accordance with section eight point three and eight, eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, due to the nature of the proposed use, the commission waives the requirement for the filing of a M I R plan with the city clerk. B, two paper copies of the full approved plan set, including the engineer's stamp. The approval letter and chairman's signature box on the title page. The approval letter and chairman's signature box on the title page shall be submitted for the chairman's signature.
So let me ask you a question, did, I didn't hear that traffic made a comment.
The trip that from, sorry, Paul.
Yeah.
It says, I have no comment on this farm stand food truck greenhouse for future.
Okay.
Food truck is in play here, they must make sure to follow the vendor guidelines.
Okay.
I'm good.
Um, I'm just, uh, I'm still struggling with the um. That's the parking, I, you know, the the site parking is one thing. But the commerce, if you're transacting business. Those people have to come in and out of the site. And I just, I can't can't imagine them not, you know, I mean, two parking spots is not enough. For for activity for the site, if it's if it's at all successful. And people want to stop and take advantage of the farm stand. I'm just concerned that the, there will be, I'm the only only parking available is alongside the. Alongside uh the road, the Newfield Road. So it it it's a concern of mine, I. I think um. It it that that's the one thing that I find difficult.
Greg, I concur with you, you know, and. With the size of the site for parking and so forth, then. I think I'm struggling with the food truck, you know, in conjunction with the size of the. The lot inspired, I mean, if this lot had ten fifteen spaces and you had a food truck there. I think we're looking at something different here, you know, personally, it's just my opinion. I'm going to your produce, I don't need to grab a burger. Now, I guess. It depends on how important certain aspects of this big master plan that you folks have. In having a food truck there, you know, even the the future greenhouse. Could that be located elsewhere on your property? And utilize that space and even the food truck space for additional parking. Because first and foremost, I hope it's successful if this goes through, that, you know, you have a few cars. Staffing, if you will, to get in there and back out.
Um, so I mean, I think that, I don't, you know, maybe my definition of success is versus somebody else is maybe different. Um, I'm not looking to, you know, replace my job by any means. Um, I'm looking to offload the produce that we have, that's access that right now that we're wasting. Um, we we don't really, or we could expand other areas within our our spot, but we don't have the nice flat spot. That's one of the reasons why that greenhouse, I wanted to put that high tunnel there. Is because that is a very nice flat area. Um, that we could plant and um the property that I own, that we own, if we don't have a lot of that. Um, the previous summer is actually had a little like a like a potato um patch, um basically where the parking is gonna go. Um, down there, um, so. I don't know about other questions that that you had.
Personally, I'd rather see enhanced greenhouse. And skip the food truck.
But by food truck, you know, I can. It maybe food truck is not even really the right terminology, um, I don't, I don't think legally I could provide apple cider. With what I have. With the farm stand. You know, I don't intend to have, you know, grinders and burgers and pizzas and things like that. At this, it's really, I just want to make sure that we can have a place, somebody who's. Um, authorized to do so and to serve simple stuff, it could be, you know, baked goods with. You know, with a with a with with apple cider, like I mentioned, it's not um. You know, I understand like with a brewery or a winery that there's a big food aspect of that, but that's not my.
No excessive parking, sir.
I I get it, I understand what you're saying, I mean, great, you have a little bit of a small food truck there, then. You might sell baked goods out of it, you might sell honey, you might sell some some apple cider. Which is an ancillary products to the natural produce that's in the farm stand. It it's just a small piece of property to try to do all these things. And like I said, if you generate some success here and people start to get. Attracted to what you're doing. I I'm seeing that as being somewhat problematic. I would rather see more onsite parking. And less uh manufacturing or growing. You know, you add to your point, you know, these are products that you. You want to move rather than have them go bad.
So possibly to to do to do the operation and we're we're certainly wasting a lot of money by not having an avenue to to sell it.
Right.
I mean, are you manning the the farm stand?
Well, we're, yeah, yeah, we would, it's not, you know, we're gonna be there when it, when it's in operation.
How are you getting there?
I'm gonna drive there, I live around.
Where are you parking?
Probably behind the, behind the food truck, I mean, behind the uh the farm stand.
And that's not showing either. You know?
Well.
I mean, it's intentional to use, but yeah, but again. The problem I have is there's lack of parking for what you're doing, if you're affording two people in there. There's a car parking on the road or somewhere.
I mean, my my honestly, my question is, would I have relatives people, I don't I don't know that, honestly, like, I really don't know. I mean. I don't, I don't know, you know, to honestly to to Dorance's point, even in this gentleman here, like, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to build a wall in my backyard either. Um.
No, I, first and foremost, sir, you know, we're not here just to like, you know, shoot you at the hip here.
Yeah, no, I understand, it's, but they're all viable questions.
Bringing things to the forefront that, you know what? We don't want to have something that's gonna be detrimental. To the road traffic and so forth, that, you know, you got three people stacked waiting to get in. To buy produce, you know, or that one guy that's parked in the back waiting to get a burger or slice of pizza, because he just saw a food truck.
Well, the other issue I have is that, you know, if you're parking on the Newfield Road, that's, you know, getting in and out of your car. On the Newfield Road is, you know, I don't know, I I would call, I would call that testy, a little bit testy at times. So.
I I travel that road twenty times a day, I know exactly where it is, and what it's all about, and that's what I'm saying, I think. I understand concept. I have a problem with concept, I'm not big on food truck, I think personally that should be eliminated. I think um it should be tweaked, the large tree should be located, I think the. And enhanced parking, I think you need to take your engineering, take a good look at this. And so we see exactly what you have physically on your piece of property. Because right now, you're talking about all these big trees and everything, I don't even know where they are, then you're talking about parking behind these food stands. And that's not a concern.
I mean, if I had to park there, I mean, I could easily not park there, but the the tree that I referred to is actually the one that. May wanted to make sure was remaining or purely wetlands.
No, and I I I have a problem with that, it's just that no one knows where it's located. You know, talk about it and all the other existing features that are on your piece are not shown on this.
Can I ask you a question, how many, how many um. Parking spots would you suggest having for a farm stall?
Well, I think we have to know if you're gonna.
I mean, I was just going by regulation.
That's the, that's the main.
Well, first and foremost, you have one employee, so there's one space gone already theoretically.
That's me, yeah, well, maybe. I mean, if we had, if there was a, and like, my wife is here, if we had to not occupy a space and not park in the property, we'd make it happen, I, I mean, I literally lived behind it. You know, I mean, we could, we could figure that out, um, for the amount of time that we're there. You know, we could certainly figure that out, I just, you know, putting these plans together, um, the engineer, you know, he. He he's going by the regulation for how many spots, I mean. If something, if somebody told me I had the regulations that I have to have three spots and not have three spots.
Comfortable with enhancing with the parking?
There is space there. Yeah.
You know, and again, even for your space, you know, owner's parking.
So, I mean, there there's, there is space to do that, I have to go back to my engineer and. Pay him a warning to do so.
I I think the cons- the consensus kind of sounds like we want to eliminate the food truck and use that use that for additional parking right there. Bring in a parking space or something.
I think the best use is the farm stand.
That's our primary goal is the farm stand, yes.
That's what I'm focused on. My focus, my focus is the farm stand, it's. And, you know, being a special exception, we, you know, we. We have to consider. Now, you know, uh, the regulation may say, you know, there's only two, two spots required, but we have to consider how the site's gonna work. So.
If if we don't have the regulations that go by, what do we, how do we know? How many spots?
I mean, we don't have a lot of guidance when it comes to farm stands, that's part of the problem, we don't.
Right.
I would say I didn't, I didn't do it thinking that I was trying to. Not do what I think was, you know, right in the plan by providing.
No, no, I don't think anyone thinks that, it's just a question of reviewing it and. Trying to make sense out of what would make it workable as opposed to what we're looking at right now.
So you think, do you think we could condition a file set of plans on um. Add a parking space where that food truck is and one behind the, behind the farm stand as an owner, as an owner's spot? Locating, I I don't think there's a lot, besides in the wood line, I don't think there's. More than one or two other eight and nine trees there. I I think, I I think there's few enough that we could probably just. You know, if they're, unless they're in the way of the parking spaces, we can, we can make make that conditional.
I'm not looking to cut down two hundred euro trees.
I think they're all right away too.
I can't imagine you need other spots.
Yeah, one 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 will be taken by by the by the owner, and then three would be available for.
And I, I agree with you, you know. First thing, I don't think the food truck location at this location is applicable.
Okay.
I agree, it doesn't work, so I think we should eliminate the food truck, we should try and increase onsite parking. For the consumers who might want to stop in and pick up the. Vegetables and such that you might have there, including your cider, if you put it on the farm stand, I would imagine somebody would want to buy that.
You know, if somebody's licensed, if you, if it's just a matter of having the license to sell it, you can just have that person there.
Right, that's all. Yeah.
Jeremy, if this parking area was just bumped. And created additional space to the north.
Yeah, so as long as it's not approaching on the front line or the sideline.
You know, basically, it's it's right in line with what's there now, that existing park, just to get. Enhance it more in that direction.
Yeah, it just can't be any closer than that, that sideline step back to this.
Well, I think the way, the way I approach it is, I don't really want to get involved with trying to figure out how it should be done. I want it, I want him to go back and back to his engineer and maybe the city engineer. As well, and settle on maximizing, we, the the idea here is. It's hard to say, well, get six places out of it, get four places out of it. Look at the site. Consider what the use is gonna be, which is what we're all thinking is it's a farm stand, this is not gonna have a food truck on it. I even would say that we should eliminate special events, because I don't think that the site can handle a special event. And uh, and, you know, we walk before we run. So we get the site up, it's a farm stand, we have some onsite parking. That we think is the most we can get out of the site. Um, the best we can do. And then we see how it goes. At that point. Um. You know, maybe. It it's, it's a, an a non, a non-issue. But I I really do think that that, that we should stick to the intended use, which is. He has an outlet, it's a farm stand to to move produce that he would probably lose. So he he gets that opportunity. That's the, that's the limit of what, that will be the limit of what he's up to.
Have you considered even like CSA programs and some of the other uh. Places?
Yeah, I mean, we have, yeah, farm, we have, uh, in our best, our best outlet right now has been, you know, direct to restaurants. Because the time it takes to move to whether if you're jumping from, you know, farmers are, farmers market. It just, it doesn't really work for us right now.
Now, you mentioned you're selling to all the restaurant here, are you delivering or they're picking out?
No, I deliver. Yeah, David, nobody picks up, we don't really have a place to pick up, and we don't, otherwise people have to come up to the house, it doesn't, you know.
I think the consensus here is, everyone's been mentioning is, I think the food truck. Is kind of the deal breaker here, you know, the the lot is is tight, I think it's secondary. The use that you're really going for here, are you comfortable? Take that off the table?
Yeah, I mean, if it means that we can't get it through, sure. I mean, I, at the end of the day, you said that, I mean, our main goal is to get the farm stands so that we can sell produce. You were trying to use it as an accessory to, to just to to drive, you know, to help something.
And I don't think it's a, I don't think it's anything against the food truck, the food truck, I think it's just the site.
Like I said, if you have fifteen, twenty spaces there, throw a food truck in there, you know. Park your your household vehicles and so forth and. Have the pumpkin patch uh activities and so forth.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's probably our best. Do you have anything else to add at this point? Any other commissioners have any comments? At the time it was eight twenty eight, if the public hearing closes, then we will make a decision at a future meeting. Right, the time is eight twenty eight, moving on to agenda item number four B. Various revisions, amendments, city park zoning regulations, app at city park planning zoning commission. Bed and breakfast section two point two, three point one, four point zero, six point ten. Outdoor dining section five point eighteen to comply with state statutes, which are. Fairly illegal, please.
No. City, city of Torington planning and zoning commission legal notice. Planning and zoning commission has. Planning and zoning commission has scheduled a public hearing on the following application on Wednesday, June twenty eight, twenty twenty three.
Excuse me. Public. Please move outside, thank you very much for trying to conduct your lovely meeting.
On Wednesday, June twenty eight, twenty twenty three, beginning at seven P M, the city hall, Torren, two eighteen, one forty, Main Street, Torren to Panetta. And we're doing A and B. A special exception twenty three dash oh three applicant ring, no, it's.
It's on the second half, but reading down, just keep going down.
Like you did the first time you were reading it.
Yeah, just keep going down a little bit.
Various revisions?
Yes.
Okay, B, various revisions, amendments, the city of Torren's and zoning regulations, applicant city of Torren's and planning and zoning commission. Bed and breakfast sections two point two, three point one, four point zero and six point one zero. Outdoor dining section five point eighteen. To comply with state statutes, time of hearing immediately found to close of the first public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Jeremy, why don't you just dive right into it?
Yep. Yeah, so uh, just before I start reading, we've had this for about two months before, before we finally got to this public hearing, so. Um, anyway, uh, so bed and breakfast sections two point two, three point one, four point zero and six point one zero. Upon a routine review of the zoning regulations, I noted areas of the current regulations governing bed and breakfast establishments. That are in need of revisions. I'm proposing amendments to the zoning regulations as follows. Simplifying the requirements for bed and breakfast requirements within each allowed zoning district. Including minimum lot sizes, room frontage and buffering. Uh, in section six point one zero. Um, two, updating the zoning table, section three point one. And bed and breakfast section, section six point one zero, to allow B and Bs in the R ten and R fifteen zones. Um, next revise the definition of bed and breakfast, section two point two. Um, then added definition for short term rental. This definition is only to contrast the difference between standard B and Bs. This definition is only to contrast the difference between standard B and Bs. Hotels, motels, boarding houses, and short-term rentals. No regulations are proposed at present to regulate short-term rentals. And last, revisions to various areas of section four, all requirements. Of the regulations to relocate requirements to section six point one zero. This includes language governing minimum lot sizes, lot widths, and building setback requirements. Some existing language in both sections pertaining only to bed and breakfast uses is repetitive. I have reviewed two separate tax provisions to the above sections of the regulations in two thousand and nine and twenty twelve. And I believe these proposed amendments have remained within the spirit and purpose of the prior amendments. As with the prior amendments, encouraging the use of suitable properties for bed and breakfast uses. Is not only a tool to preserve large historic homes, but also expands lodging and tourism opportunities in Torrington. I have made the memorandum and letters from the previous amendment approvals part of the record file for, for this proposal. Staff comments. Economic Development Director, uh, Krista Malaga, City of Torrington Economic Development Director verbally indicated her support for the regulation amendment. No additional comments were received from staff regarding this proposed amendment. I believe these proposed changes will simplify the regulations and continue to enhance preservation and tourism opportunities. While protecting surrounding neighborhoods and uses. The proposed amendments are generally supported by the City Plan of Conservation and Development. Section six of the plan encourages the preservation of community character, scenic resources, historic resources, and farmland preservation. Section eight of the plan encourages continued methods to promote, promote tourism in the city. This regulation amendment furthers the goals of plan by providing for additional methods of tourism and preserves community character and historic resources. Outdoor Dining, Section five point one eight. A newly adopted state statute became effective May first, twenty twenty-three, C G S eight dash one C C. Which establishes a framework for municipalities to regulate outdoor dining. The city is currently still operating under the temporary COVID dining regulations adopted during COVID emergency coverage. The state has lifted the emergency declaration and the new statute is in effect. So I'm proposing new regulations to comply with the state statute and replace. Both the pre-pandemic outdoor dining regulations and the COVID outdoor dining procedure. I included the new statute as part of the file. Summary of the changes to section five point one eight of the regulations as follows. Uh, first, separate the previously combined seasonal sidewalk dining and seasonal outdoor dining and private property into two sections. Um, two, provide general requirements covering both types of outdoor dining uses and separate specific requirements for each type. Um, next, allow for outdoor dining areas on adjacent informing properties in compliance with state law by administrative zoning permit. From April first to October thirty-first each year. Next, allow extensions and zoning permits for two years in compliance with the regulations. Um, then allow for installation of temporary seasonal dining areas on private property over existing off-street parking spaces. Add language not allowing dining areas over pedestrian sidewalks or vehicle travel lanes. Or required handicap, or, or required handicap parking, accessible parking spaces on private property. And last, prohibit permanent structures over required off-street parking spaces with the exception of permitted owners. Other staff comments, Krista Malaga, A I C P, Torrington Economic Development Director verbally indicated her support for the proposed regulation amendment. Police Traffic. Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus in an email to me dated May sixteen, twenty twenty-three offered the following comments on the proposed amendment. My only question is the timing in which outdoor dining is allowed. Six A M I get, but if the restaurant is open until midnight serving food, can it be allowed within the regulation? I think as long as food is being served is more the determination of being able to stay out for the purposes of dining, right? My only comment on this, as you have covered keeping sidewalks free and clear, instructions tied down, no excess lighting and trash receptacles. Building, Building Official Kevin Gillette in an email to the City Planner dated March second, twenty twenty-three offered the following comments. Section five point one eight, point three. A, B should prohibit the use of parking spaces dedicated for accessibility as spaces for dining. Thank you. The above comments were used to revise the proposed regulation amendment. No additional comments were received from staff regarding this proposed amendment. The proposed outdoor dining amendment is generally supported by the City Plan of Conservation and Development. The amendment builds on the goals and recommendations of section seven of the plan downtown in neighborhoods. By continuing to prom- promote the pedestrian environment and the general occupancy and revitalization of the downtown and other commercial areas of the city. It also promotes the goals of section eight business development by providing flexibility for local restaurants. I recommend approval of the, the attached regulation amendments with the effective date being the day of publication of the legal notice of decision in the local newspaper.
Any commissioners have any questions or comments?
No. Good.
Jeremy, back to, uh, police and traffic. What's your thoughts to put a. A limit on. The hours at night.
So I think, I think Sergeant Baldus may have missed this part, but the, the section reads. The seasonal outdoor food and beverage area shall be in use only when the associated businesses open. But in no case shall, shall open earlier than six A M or later than eleven P M. So it's, I, I don't think, I actually think that was newer, that those aren't, aren't existing, may have just been. Um, I mean.
And then back.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think for the most part, eleven is gonna be the latest endpoint. It's usually earlier than that to serve food, but that's. At the top of it.
And obviously, it's up to restaurants' responsibility. To address their liquor permits and so forth if they're gonna be having the outside. Between slash patio environment.
Yeah, so we don't, so we, you know, as you guys know, we don't regulate liquor anymore, but liquor control has, has their patio permits, their separate patio permits. That we need to sign off on and they, they require the barriers and, and all that. So, uh, the only thing generally for the. For when they're on the public sidewalks is for us to make, really just to make sure they're leaving that four-foot lane. And that, um, they have the insurance when they're on, when they're on city property.
Now, do they provide the city with an insurance certificate?
Yeah, a million dollars, maybe the city isn't. Yeah, that's.
That's the insurance.
Insurance, yeah, so that's obviously that doesn't. That doesn't hold when they're on their own private property. That's why, that's kind of why I wanted to peel these apart and, and two separate regulations. Cause they were, our, our previous regulations, they were all combined in one list and they got really confusing. Cause there's two different, two different things we're talking about here. Like when a restaurant wants to use their own parking lot versus the, just the sidewalk. Yeah, and bed and breakfast, really the biggest change there was I, I dropped that, um, frontage requirement, it was at a hundred and forty-five feet, which was a very weird number. And I dropped it to one twenty-five because it matched in general what the frontage was for the zones. And adding, uh, I, it really made no sense that they want those two zones more allowed, whether the others homeless.
So in your language, you know, you got short-term rental.
Yes.
Is that synonymous with Airbnb?
Yes. Yeah, but it's, there's more, there's. There's more than just Airbnb, there's just one aspect of the short-term rental. So then basically the. The definition is anything rented for thirty days or less in a calendar year. To an individual, to an individual person. So anything that doesn't fall under this is, is, is just considered renting. Any, any of these things.
Does anything change with the bed and breakfast system in operation now?
No, it actually makes them more flexible for, I mean, they, they, they come more in compliance, because we had a higher, we had a higher standard for.
Then you need to make both. Unfortunately, you make both. I got that side.
Yeah, I think we, I think the other thing we did. Let's look at this. I think the other thing we did is, uh, it used to be an handy. I don't know why I don't have the strikeout there. But, uh, we used to have not to receive fourteen days in a thirty-day period. Well, that means people are just coming out, in and out. You leave it over, people are coming in and out in two weeks. So we did it every, it's. Like, but if you look at some of the shoreline towns, it's like once every ninety-eight period, because that's a season. So basically lots of people that'll come back to a B and B. You know, every season, if they wanted to. I mean, we don't want, we don't want them tipping over where they're just playing games and, and bringing, bringing renters in back for. And calling it a B and B. Yeah. So, um, you know, just, uh, I put all these definitions together just to make sure that we can see the contrast and. Uh, I, one thing I noticed too, is we also have. No standards for boarding houses. I think that's something we need to look at. We, we just have. It's just by special exception, there's no standards for them. So we're having an issue on, uh, section three right now. We're, we're wondering, looking, trying to find some guidance and. We have, we have special exception standards, but not, but nothing else on boarding houses.
A little across from the fireplace is one as well.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, it's considered a boarding house, but they have their, because for boarding houses, they don't have their own kitchens, they share, they share kitchens. Yeah. But yeah, boarding houses, even if you have a tiny room, those are, those are apartments. If you have, if you have places to cover. Like board, the, the, the difference with boarding houses is you, is you use a common area, okay, you're just in a room, kind of like, almost like a. You know, a, a door, a lot, you know?
There's a.
Yeah.
Sure, beloved public, would anyone like to speak in favor of this application? Please tell broader state name and address of your right. That includes anyone on Zoom. Being known, would anyone like to speak in opposition on this application? And that includes anyone on Zoom. And for the record, serving on the commission this evening for this public hearing is Diane Carroll, Jim Abitz, Tom Tom, Greg Percy, and myself, Greg Millie, also. Jeremy Leifer.
Um, where did, where did Starley sign on?
And Starley.
You know, you know about the time he signed on?
Seven ten.
Seven ten, he bickered the whole time.
Yeah.
For the record, Starley Arias signed on at seven ten, and he was part of the public hearing. Of Special Exception twenty-three dash zero three and Site Plan fourteen fifty-seven. Any other questions or comments? The time is eight forty-four. I put it's public hearing closed and.
Let me read this.
Please.
Approved various revisions, amendments to City of Torrington zoning regulations, applicants in the, City of Torrington Planning and Zoning Commission. Bed and Breakfast Sections two point two, three point one, four point zero, and six point one zero. Outdoor Dining Section five point one eight to comply with state statutes. Effective date of the regulation change slash amendment shall be the day after publication of the legal notice of decision in the local newspaper.
Our motion, my second.
Second.
All is in favor? Oh, so, thank you. Uh, times eight forty-five, moving on to John item number six, old business we have none. Moving on to John item number seven, new business. Site Plan fourteen fifty-six, Advocate Pinborough Associates LLC. Location eight eighty-seven Minchin Avenue and eight ninety-five Minchin Avenue. Possible modifications to previously approved self-storage warehouse.
Well, I think the applicants here, but I prefer I just dive right into my mental on this one. This is a site plan application. Um, Pinborough Associates LLC has filed an application to modify Site Plan number fourteen twenty-two. What else I passed it out? Modified Site Plan number fourteen twenty-two, that was approved October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two at eight eighty-seven and eight ninety-five Minchin Avenue. Taxation map two twenty-two, block zero zero five, block zero three five. For construction of a self-storage facility and associated site improvements. The modification proposes to redesign the stormwater control in the rear of the property. From a previously approved underground retention area to an underground stormwater basin. The footprint of two of the four self-storage buildings are proposed to be reduced to accommodate the stormwater basin. The first is reduced from three thousand four hundred and fifty square feet to twenty-seven hundred square feet. And the other from twenty-two hundred and fifty square feet to fifteen hundred square feet. The location of proposed parking spaces are also slightly adjusted forward north on the property to fit the basin. The modification, the modification does not propose any changes to existing setbacks or uses on the property. And the remaining area of the previously approved plans remains unchanged. Plans submitted are titled proposed self-storage units, eight ninety-five Minchin Avenue, tor, metagip regulatory submission by S L R, legislature connected. Man, I haven't really been these, with these dates, the. Date, date, oh no, actually I'm right. Date is September fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, revised to May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, nine sheets. Also included is the revised draft report dated May twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Staff has communicated with the property owner's representative and engineer to discuss the project prior to this meeting. Other items of note, in accordance with the zoning table, it appears that the proposed. Purbius pavement area to the rear of the property has been eliminated and replaced at a comparable area with the stormwater basin. The property remains compliant with the seventy-five percent maximum in Purbius cover zoning regulation. Two, no changes are proposed from the previous approval for the adjacent residential property at eight ninety-five Minchin Avenue. Other staff comments. Economic, uh, Krista Malaga, A I C P, Torrington Economic Development Director verbally indicated her support for the project. Assistant Planner, Nate Nardi Cyrus, Assistant City Planner, in an email to the City Planner dated June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. Offered the following comment on the plans. General, a portion of the newly designed retention basin and self-storage building four are within the one hundred-foot floodline. A floodplain permit will be required prior to any work on the site. Demonstrating compliance with Torrington's zoning, uh, Torrington's flood hazard regulations, section seven point two. Wetlands, there are regulated water courses in the vicinity of the subject property that require wetlands review for this proposal. The applicant submitted a wetland permit application. Um, she's beginning to nine fifteen twenty-two with the permit. Eighty twenty-two oh nine oh two issued on ten six twenty-two. An application to modify this permit with the proposed plans was submitted on June fourteenth and will be approved on July twelfth. This constitutes a favorable wetlands report for the application. Landscaping, the proposed landscaping as shown on sheet LP is consistent with Torrington's code. Lighting, no lighting shown on the site plan. New lighting was complied with section five point one seven of the city's zoning code. Including the use of float tunnel fixtures. We encourage the use of products approved by the International Truck Scout Association. Signage, there are no new signs proposed as part of this application. Assigned permits shall be required for installing a signage in accordance with section five point one five of the zoning regulations. Conservation, the application was not referred to the conservation commission. Architectural Review Committee, this modification was not submitted to the A R C for review. Engineering, Paul Conson, City Engineer, in an email to the City Planner dated June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Endorsed the application and modified plans, subject to conditions, see attached. Other departments, no comments were received from the Fire, from Fire Marshal Edward Vaseta or the Torretary Health District. Regarding the proposed modification. Building Official Kevin Gillette, Police Traffic Sergeant Dustin Baldus, and W P C A Administrative Assistant Sheriff Lewis. Stated that they have no comments on this application for their respective departments. Conclusion, I recommend approval of Site Plan fourteen fifty-six to modify previously approved Site Plan. Number fourteen twenty-two, eight eighty-seven, eight ninety-five Minchin Avenue. For modification of the stormwater retention area and associated site modifications. As presented on submitted plans for the following conditions and recommendations. One, all conditions contained in previous approval of Site Plan fourteen twenty-two remain in effect except for those as noted below. Two, the applicant shall follow the requirements of Assistant City Planner Nate Nardi Cyrus. In his June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three email to the City Planner. Three, the applicant shall address remaining conditions identified by Paul Conson, City Engineer. In his remaining June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three comments. Prior to the issuance of zoning permits and filing the final modified plans. In accordance with section, uh, four, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations. The following shall be submitted to the City Planner. A, two paper copies of the full group plans with corrections. And including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page, and sheet G R, creating utilities. B, one Mylar copy of the final Site Plan, creating a utility sheet, sheet G R. For filing with the city clerk in accordance with section eight point four point three point P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a signature, chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission, an engineer's seal and lighting stamp. C, Mylar sheets shall be filed with the, by, by the applicant with the city clerk. After the signature of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Thank you, Jeremy. Any questions, have any comments or questions?
So this three families is, is being demolished, yes?
No, it's, it's, it's gonna stay in use. The, uh, the, the original approval has a property line adjustment and that's not gonna change. Yeah, so nothing else with the, with the, the, the house site is gonna change.
I thought that they had said that last time that was.
Yeah, no, they're, they're, they're keeping that, but it's, uh, they, they moved the property line. They still had enough, um. They had enough square footage to comply and enough parking still remaining in the house lot.
Anyone else?
No time.
I make a motion to approve site plan fourteen fifty-six, applicant Pinborough Associates L L C. Location eight eighty-seven Mission Avenue and eight ninety-five Mission Avenue. Proposal modifications to previously approved self-storage warehouse. With the following conditions and recommendations. All conditions, number one, all conditions contained in previous approval of site plan. Number fourteen twenty-two remain in effect except for those as noted below. Number two, the applicant shall follow the requirements of assistant city planner Nate Nardi Cyrus in his June twenty-second, twenty-three email to the city planner. Three, the applicant shall address remaining conditions identified by Paul Constance, city engineer in his remaining June twenty-seven, twenty twenty-three. Comments prior to issuing the zoning permits and filing the final modified plans. Four, in accordance with section eight point four point three and eight point four point six of the zoning regulations, the following shall be submitted to the city planner. A, two paper copies of the fully approved plans with corrections. And including the engineer's stamp and chairman's signature box on the title page. And sheet G R grading and utilities. B, one Mylar, Mylar copy of the final site plan grading and utility sheet, sheet G R for filing. In accordance with section eight point four point three P of the zoning regulations. Each Mylar sheet shall bear a chairman's signature box, a copy of the approval letter from the commission. An engineer's seal and lighting stamp. C, Mylar sheet, sheets shall be filed by the applicant with the city clerk after the signature. Of the chairman and prior to the approval of zoning permits to begin construction.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Post, so move. Moving on to agenda number eight, correspondence, A, zoning light violation update. So we have a list in our pocket.
Do you have an update? Um, as usual, if anybody has any specific questions, let, let me know. I can get any, any answers for progress through. Through what we have, or what we've been working on. Um, one thing I can't say is I have to take action, um, for, for me personally, I have to take action against. Um, the food truck, um, or, or for that that we approved, um, which I'll probably wind up doing in the next week or so. Uh, it's not the conditions that have been followed on that, that you grew, yeah. So, um. I gave me, basically he had eight months to operate without doing anything he was supposed to do, so. Um, I, I think our, our only option is to move off the property. If you have everything done, you can, you can come there. You know, he's, he's got eight months of, of, of work on it without doing anything they've asked him to do, so. So I have to deal with that problem next week.
Corner of markets, the food truck and corner of park drive.
The batchy brew.
And he's mainstream, yeah. Yeah, he hasn't even done the, I, I, I heard, I had a meeting with him, he hasn't even done the basics. I, I called the engineer myself. And he has given contact with the engineer to get, to get plans filed or zoning permits pulled or anything else, so.
Ready? Time is eight fifty-six. Moving on to agenda item number nine, adjournment.
Um, I'll move, will you adjourn?
All is in favor? Post, so move. I'm getting there, everyone. Thank you for all.
Okay, bye-bye.